Hello everybody, my name is Aria Hall.
And I am Tanisha Hall.
And we're both seniors of Benton High School in St. Joseph, Missouri. If you live in St. Joseph, you've probably heard about the school district's recent plans with the current facilities. The most controversial plan is that they're talking about dealing with the high schools and how they should deal with them. Um what makes this actually so controversial is the fact that the school board is very sensitive on shutting down at least one high school. Um if you don't live in St. Joseph or even if you're not aware of why this is such a big deal um. We had three high schools in our town, um Central, Lafayette and Benton because of how big the city is. Um with each of these high schools, they have a unique culture and history and tradi- set of traditions with them. So obviously a lot of people that have either gone there, their kids have gone there or even their grandkids have gone there are very
Yeah.
emotionally touched that these schools are attacking the school leadership and very angry like Facebook posts and all that and I don't think maybe that is what we really need to do for the school leadership. They're not gonna listen to someone that's just going on Facebook.
Yeah, and being angry.
Yeah, we, I think we should start a conversation with the school leadership and I think it's best that the students start off with it because um they are saying that we're um
We don't, we don't really matter in this situation.
Not even just that. They're yeah, they're looking at the numbers but also they keep on quoting that um it's in the best interest for students and why not have students actually say what they actually think.
Yeah.
But um we should probably even before we even say what our opinion even is in this is what even are the plans? So um let me pull up those plans. There we go, okay. So um the first concept is concept A and that's the one new high school and that is the one the most the town is in um projection of because of the whole traditions and blah 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 but let's not get into that, we'll just say what each concept plan is and the one new high school is actually the most expensive one actually. Um actually wait a minute. I'll get the numbers in a second but um let's just list them and then I'll pull up the files. And so um concept B is two new high schools. Which of course a lot of people aren't in favor of that either.
Yeah.
Um concept C is to renovate Central and then
Isn't it renovate all high school?
Um hold on, is this renovate oh renovate Central and build a new high school. So obviously that one's probably gonna be even more expensive than concept A. Um concept D is renovate all high schools and then concept E is adding to Halyard which is a technical center. Which is like where people go if um a welding, welding like they wanna get a license or something like that. Um and they would also build a new high school for tenth and twelfth graders and a new ninth grade center which um I get their reasoning behind that one um.
That seems kind of unnecessary.
Yeah. Um.
Considering we've been doing it like we have for so long.
Besides that point, let's get to the whole numbers behind each plan so. Got them to finally pull up. Where is concept? There we go, concept A, okay and that's the one with the big new high school. And it would be a hundred and eighty six million dollars so yikes.
Yeah.
But I guess we were all assuming that it was going to be that big and also with the um with each of the high schools they would like like the three high schools, they're gonna end up look at how good they are so they can decide do we just need to tear them down, can we turn them into a middle school, can we
Apartment complex.
Yeah, whatever they think they need to do but yeah, a hundred and eighty six million dollars and yeah, try to keep these numbers in your head if you can um concept B. And that would be the two new high schools um they're both um separately are going to be ninety five million dollars and then of course they would again look at reevaluating the schools. So we're seeing a a pattern here um the face of that total would be um a hundred and ninety million dollars so a five million dollar difference and I know like you just hear five and then you hear million like yikes, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Um and then concept C which is the renovating Central and then building a new, just one new high school. Um building the new high school be ninety five million dollars and then renovating Central would be forty eight million dollars. And then again they will look at the other two schools and see what they could do with that. And in total that's going to be a hundred and forty three million dollars. And I should probably say again that um these aren't for sure numbers, they these are just estimates. But still you should probably keep estimates in your mind. And um concept D which is renovate all current high schools is twenty five million dollars for Benton, forty eight million dollars for Central, thirty one million dollars for Lafayette and in total that's going to be a hundred of four million dollars. Hmm and concept E which is the new ninth grade center and the tenth grade through twelfth grade high school center. They would of course shut down like all the schools to reevaluate them again and the Halyard technical for the addition which is basically like creating an annex on it or whatever
Yeah.
is thirty seven million dollars. So we're already getting pretty pricey there.
Yeah.
Um the new tenth through twelfth grade high school be ninety nine million dollars. And then the new ninth grade center would be fifty million dollars so in total this would be a hundred and eighty six million dollars. Now if you've kinda kept those numbers in head this is kinda why um we kinda support this idea is a huge one. Concept D, the renovating the high schools would actually be pretty sure the cheapest.
Most likely, yeah, literally the cheapest one.
Yeah, it's the cheapest one so um and I get some people are saying like I conducted a survey, I asked people, some people said you know putting more money into the schools later on like wherever you're renovating, it's not gonna stay permanent or whatever, eventually the school is gonna have to like, it's gonna fall down a bit more. But still for right now, renovating the high schools would be the cheapest. And their whole new, the school leadership's idea that they're trying to force with this new high school is really expensive. And I actually emailed them about where the money would come from. Just asking if we if the voters like were like yeah, well you may wanna do this, where would the money even come from? It would come from a tax or a levy bond and if you remember a couple years back.
What they did with the last levy bond.
Yes, we um already, they already did a tax increase, I don't exactly remember the number, I just remember a lot of people were upset about it and everything. And what they've kinda done with that money, um I've noticed no differences in the schools.
No, no changes.
Except campus supervisors and what that is is basically I Yeah, I don't, we're not trying to trash on their job but that but like for example like this computer I'm reading the stuff off right now um could any second the internet could go out on it because they don't pay good money for, we could have been spending that money on better technology or whatever.
Better technology, better routers.
Oh yeah, cause the internet sucks at the schools, it always disconnects and that's very dangerous.
Yes.
Especially for certain tests like you're into the credit test that like you can't get back into it like done deal. But um yeah, it's just that was on it and then a lot of people in town are extremely annoyed with that after the, they're like okay we gave you this tax, we were paying you these taxes and you're kinda doing nothing with them. And so how will people already in town kinda react about if they had to pay, of course any of these are gonna require tax money but
Yes, of course but.
How, what is, where is the point where people are gonna get angry about like, okay, well you could pay this much more or I feel like with the one new high school or even the two high schools, at that point people are go they're already gonna be upset about the whole about theirs, if their school gets shut down or whatever but even more people are gonna be mad at being like okay, so I'm basically paying you to shut down my school that I currently attended. And I can't guarantee if I'm going to like the new school or if I can even go to this year or whatever. And I've already paid you tax money before and
You love nothing with it.
Yeah, and even if you're not even talking about recently, like if you're talking about in the past ten years um the school leadership got in trouble with the federal government because it was proven that they weren't stealing money and that's what they're, they're very insistent saying they weren't stealing money that it was very it was used irresponsibly.
It was illegal.
It was illegal no matter what, the government, the federal government got involved and if anybody's been in government class they would know state government controls the school so what happens wherever state is seen no more like you're not taking care of the job, that's whoever the national government decides you guys are messing up like really badly, that that's not good. Um so whenever like that happened, everything, people over, Ben were extremely angry and people are still angry about it now being like, why should I trust you with my money even though they've all been like fired or whatever. They still don't feel like they could be trusted so and then just two years ago, like just this year, they decided to use this tax money for campus supervisors and whatever.
Are semi useless cause at a big of a high school as we're at Benton. Having two campus supervisor, even having two, they can't, they won't be able to get to everyone who's trying to skip class. Cause we have three floors.
Not even just three, but we have like the three floors and the annex which aren't exactly level, they're on this different set of like we said earlier, the Halyard, it's like the attaching, that's basically what it would be, it would be attachment, it's that's what the annex is.
The annex for us.
It's a weird level, it's like decimal levels.
Yeah, but it's an attachment and the the homeowners cannot be everywhere at once. There's only two currently but they are basically useless. They do a good job doing what they need to do in the area that they are currently at.
But there's honestly, that's, it's just aggravating because wherever you see them like they're doing stuff yeah, but we could be having better computers. Or be even better favor, better food like literally, it could have gone to anything else and so it's just
They've also could have made it to where we didn't have to pay for school lunches.
Yeah, there could have been so many other and so this is why then parents are getting even more mad cause it's like we gave you a second chance and you're blowing it. So a lot of people I can imagine if they were like, okay yeah, you're gonna be paying so much more for this one new high school or two new high schools, whatever. Um a lot of people are gonna project that, they're gonna get angry, I can imagine there's going to be a lot of people that are gonna be like yeah, um you know.
Thanks, I'd rather put my money into something that matters.
Yeah, they could, they'll be like, you know what, we could just move to Gower, Atchison or like a neighboring city or whatever and just go there and they don't have to worry about paying their taxes and their kids as some people say might be getting a better chance.
Just as from a student's standpoint, seeing that the school district is only looking at the numbers um about everything, it kinda makes it seem like they don't care about the actual people in the high schools.
Oh yeah.
They care about the money, the money and the money.
The money, well even then like that, I don't
I don't know how
I don't get the whole concept plans with them be like, we're only looking at the numbers but the numbers clearly point like if you're, if you're thinking about, cause the school leadership probably doesn't even wanna spend a ton of money on stuff cause that's just thinking logically um but concept D literally is the cheapest one and with them really trying to push this new single high school is probably one of the most expensive, I don't get where they're coming from where it's like oh yeah, we're looking at the numbers but I'm like clearly you're not cause you would be in favor of concept D.
It's not the most expensive one but it's up there.
It's pretty much up there but um yeah, that's kinda, that's one reason why we're in favor of renovate all the high schools, none of the other ones, other ones um so one thing we should probably talk about next is how we said earlier, the cultures and the traditions, everything at each high school. Like these, most of these high schools have been here for a while, like I know for me personally um my mom, my dad and my aunt and uncles, they all went to Benton. Um their parents went to Benton, even like great, yeah, like my great grandparents have gone there to the like Benton so obviously there is a huge like generational, yeah, generational connection between these schools or wherever.
And even though I'm not um, I wasn't, I wasn't born in Missouri, I was born in Oklahoma and I moved here and I got to Benton. My two brothers, my two older brothers have went to Benton and my sister, my younger sister will also go to Benton.
So it's not like a generational thing for you but it's more just like, it's like a
It's gradually generational.
Yeah, I don't know how else best to describe it, more like an age like
Yeah.
like you are now fifteen, you shall go to this school, that's the best way I can describe it. But um yeah, not even, so like with each school they got these rivalries or whatever like if you go to um the jamboree, like the basketball jamboree or football jamboree, which is where like all the schools compete against each other and sometimes they don't get to compete each other, get all against each other, that doesn't usually happen, it's basically like a tournament. And you get to see like the section with blue, the section with green, the section of red, like it's really cool to see it and they're all kinda like
Yes.
trash talking each other.
It's the rivalry that makes us what we are.
Yeah, I know I just said trash talking, people would probably be like, oh well.
That's not good.
Yeah, you put guys are picking on each other but
It it's
It's like um car fans, like the whole Dodge versus Chevy thing, it's it's simple fun, like it's, I think it's always fun going to the basketball games and kinda like being like, you know what, your team sucks and this is why, like I have cousins that go to Lafayette and I'm always kinda like your school sucks, I'm like, oh, your school sucks too and it's like ah ha 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 and we always like compare our schools and that's I really actually kinda like it comparing the schools cause at each school you get a unique experience. I know the school leadership is gonna say, but that's not really fair because like you know, Central gets Latin and the other two high schools don't get Latin but
We have different things that Central doesn't have that we have.
Mm-hmm.
And Lafayette has things that neither Central nor Benton have.
Yeah, if we're just gonna talk about Benton like, not even just classes, if we're talking about activities Tenton's got a really good thing going for it and it's called Interact Club and what Interact Club is is that it's practically a student council but instead of focusing like on the pep rallies and let's make a difference at like let's change like the political system in school, not really politics, we know that but um
Yeah.
Interact focus on let's get involved in the community, let's make a difference to people, whether that be food drives not really food drives. Yeah, recycling, well that's a, I'm present on it so we're really big on that stuff. And the other high schools don't have that and a cool thing about Interact is, is that usually it bounces off of like Rotarians which Rotarians are kind of a big group in the world like globally and they're known for like eradicating polio in like several countries. So obviously they're kind of a big deal and so um the Southside Rotarians actually fund the ones in Benton, we kinda always bounce off each other, we'll be like they'll be like, oh, you guys are doing like this activity, like we're working on painting all the bathrooms, make it positive um. I was talking to the president of it, you know, president to president and she was like oh, we'll send some of our people over to help you guys paint those bathrooms. And cause we really, we help them with um the bell ringing and the flow for the Southside Fall Parade. So we kinda bounce off each other and because of that um the Southside Rotarians fund a ton of scholarships for Benton. And so obviously just looking at like Benton with that there's obviously probably some stuff going on in Lafayette that they got a similar fancy off relationship to maybe not with the Rotarians but with other groups.
Yeah, so the communities.
Yeah, other alumni from Lafayette or even Central like bouncing off of each other being like, oh, here we go and cutting off any one of those schools, like even a single one you are destroying that dynamic between like these groups that bounce off of each other usually.
Yes.
And
So not only did you rip a hole in the triangle but you made the triangle more of a line.
And lines are that fun as I would say. You're ruining that rivalry.
Yes.
You're making a straight line and nobody likes straight lines usually. Um most of, triangles are more fun to look at, you like to see people, you know, bounce off each other and everything.
Yes.
But yeah, I don't know how to say but I don't, it's just easier at that point to keep all the high schools cause you're keeping like such unique
History together.
The unique history, the unique traditions, the unique backgrounds like I just, and obviously the town already has been very angry about like in my survey, I saw multiple people go you would be ruining, like I went to this school, my kids, I planned to send my kids there, my grandparents went there like you're ruining this kind of like tradition.
Generation of tradition and history at one single school and just taking one, even one school out
It just, you're gonna make one side of the town angry.
Yeah.
Like with each of these schools, they got, with the unique cultures like Southend's got more like Triumph workers, like factory workers and farmers and then East Side's got more um retailers and business owners and Central, Central does um and then Lafayette's got, Lafayette's more in the but they, they have dug through those struggles to make something great, I will admit that even though I don't like Lafayette at times, they have dug through some stuff and so basically you're cutting off on those schools you just basically ripped off a whole unique culture, you ruining this whole unique, like you're basically silencing that background like okay, well now that you shut off Benton, you don't, you don't get the support of the farmers or factory workers anymore like sorry, our bad, like we don't want to be involved anymore.
Yes, and you cut them off and you don't have them anymore and people are getting angry and no doubt the backlash for shutting down one of these schools would obviously be monumental. It would be awful.
Horrible, I can um alright, with the strive for five policy which is basically like, okay you have to meet so much of attendance quota, whatever, otherwise you can lose credits um it's backfired, I'm pretty sure, pretty terribly cause after that point where you hit that point where it's like, okay, well you don't get credits, people just don't show up and so a lot of people have dropped out and just been like well, I'll go to Webster which um kinda brings me to my another, other point is um it's like ten years ago wherever they like shut down these old schools, wherever they've already voted on it. Um and people are like, no, we don't wanna do this texting, they were like, okay, and they kinda, I don't wanna say it but it felt like they were punishing people and they, and they shut down Webster, Neely and Hall and they were all elementary schools. And the problem with that was um with the whole Webster thing, as I referenced like just a second ago it was a s, it's still a school they're using for certain stuff. So the annoying part about it is, is that they quoted that these schools they weren't needed, they were structurally integral, they were dusty, they were dirty, then literally the next year espe, this is Webster especially, they still they made it for the Rainbow and Gate students which is like the gifted students, they pass these tests everything and they were using it still and people were like, what the, like what are you doing?
What are you doing?
Um you said it wasn't structural and now you're letting people like multiple of my like talented, smart kids and whenever
Go to the structurally sound building?
Yeah.
I actually tested for Gate and I at Gate or Rainbows and I got in so I actually uh was inside the structurally unstable building
Mm-hmm.
that they, you know, so got rid of and while I was at Gate um doing whatever, doing uh water research or messing around um there was kindergartners there so not only did they put the gifted kids who were like fifth grade, sixth grade, that stuff, that uh grade um they've also put kindergartners and preschoolers in the room next to us.
Yeah, and so that doesn't really make, and this was literally the next, like literally maybe not even a year, maybe like six months that they were like, okay, we're shutting down the school, six months ahead, they're like yeah, we are putting your preschoolers and kindergartners in this school and your gifted students like
In a school that you quoted structurally in c, unkept.
Like it, it was dirty, it was dusty and then all of a sudden it's like
You send people who you think would be in your best interest to, I don't know keep in a good w, well lit place um somewhere that's structurally sound. And looking at it from the inside um it was, it was, it was fine. There was nothing wrong with any of the walls, of course there was a couple of places that uh dripped but all schools do cause they didn't keep up with it, they don't wanna spend the money to upkeep the schools.
Yeah, and at that point a lot of people were saying, well, new is better. New is not always better, obviously, like if we're talking about a good analogy um if you're talking about like a good analogy would be um alcohol, a lot of people would say that newer alcohol is actually the worst alcohol and the older alcohol is always the best because it's fine aged and I would agree with that with the schools. Not in the sense maybe that they can just like keep it in a barrel like wine and be like, okay, you can be here for two hundred years. No, you kinda have to upkeep the schools.
Yes, the culture, you look, I gotta let the culture cultivate.
Yes, you gotta like, just like they use, you gotta let it cultivate but once in a while you kinda have to check up, be like okay, well, let's help you get better, let's polish your walls, I don't, and it was a good analogy while I had it but um
Yeah.
Obviously this concept that they're going with like, oh, new was better, I'm like, I can think of multiple scenarios why it's not always better and they proven, obviously as we've said they have proven that they are not trustworthy multiple times. And with their numbers even, it's like I don't under, I don't understand where they're coming from and if I'm just gonna talk about the survey I took like how parents that their kids go to these schools um a lot of them agree with us, the renovating the high schools is the best and let me see if I can find some of the reasons they said so. Well, that's on the answer I wanted. Like which one do you like the best? Um oh yeah, they say that we need to focus on what we have in the place that oh yeah, if we can make them into apartment buildings and resource centers after they've closed in then we can renovate them and continue and that's kinda the point with Webster, it's like they were like oh yeah, we can't do this anymore and then they just go and do it like at that point, why not just renovate them if of course referring back to that chart, it's obviously cheaper to do in the first place, why not just do that?
And why not just renovate it? Cause definitely being in the building of Webster, there was a couple times where I went upstairs to a classroom and we did classes in there and it was fine, of course, things were dusty, yes, but a little dirty and but nothing that a good cleaning would fix and if they even spend the time to, I don't know, get a cleaning crew up there or I don't know, renovate it, it would be better.
I, it's just at this point, and if you're going to like most people believe that um students do better in smaller classes so from my experience I remember my freshman math class was overpacked, it was ridiculous and I don't remember learning, it was terrible cause the teacher was always trying to get him out around and this is just a class of thirty kids and like this year I'm in my dual credit English class and we got twelve people in there and I feel like my teacher can always like, she could go around, she could develop even personal connections with us and help us learn the way that we should, so just imagine like and the, the thirty class, that wouldn't even be the worst of the problem, I believe, I could imagine it getting bigger. I don't think kids would be able to perform or even kids that like are afraid of being stuck in a room with everyone else and like imagine just trying to give a presentation in that room, I couldn't do it. I wouldn't be able to do it, it's just horrible.
Not to mention the stress on the teachers it would cause cause even now teachers, some teachers have a just have so many students that they're overwhelmed. Just have so many students that they're overwhelmed, they gotta get this done, gotta get this, gotta get to this student, they gotta get to that student, it's just wild.
Yeah, and at that point, I don't, I don't feel like right now, even the teachers are being paid that much for what they're doing, what they're dealing with. They're not in, you know, with shutting down even the high schools, you'd be cutting off teachers' jobs and you couldn't even guarantee that all of them could. Go to this one mega high school, whatever. Imagine a teacher that like, if there was a teacher from like a high school that moved onto this one mega high school, could you guarantee a big enough salary that'd be like. Yeah, you're gonna have to teach basically a college level class, like that's, like that's how big the classrooms would be, they'd be as big as like. They would have to, I believe they had to be as big as a college lecture room, I could not imagine. Unless that they wanted to make tiny little.
Yes, and not to mention how much of a nightmare making, even doing that would be, cause how many teachers you would have to employ. So basically, in the long run. Renovating all the schools would be the best plan, making a big, super new one would be. One of the worst plans, because in the long run, you'd be losing more than uh the amount we said at the beginning for just renovating. Cause you would have to pay for teachers, you'd have to pay for buses, lunch, um, technology.
You're losing enrollment fees, I bet, cause I bet a lot of people, again, like I said, they would just be like, you know what, I don't wanna pay taxes for, like, not even just like. If we're not even just talking about parents, there could be people another like, I think this is a terrible idea, I can't support it, I don't like how much I'm paying. Let me just move over to a city next, like, that's like a twenty minute drive.
To a better city.
It's just, I. I can't get behind it and I honestly, this is why I think renovating all the high schools would be best, because. It's keeping everyone happy. You're keeping the students happy with keep letting them keep their schools and having their unique opportunities. You're keeping the taxpayers happy because like they don't have to pay as much eventually. And you know, the answer to obviously this is, no, you have to do something with the high schools, cause they are getting to a point where like, we need to fix them, so. At that point, the taxpayer, this would be the, like, kind of a medium for them, like, okay, here's the best we could do, and they would be okay with it, the parents. Are seeing their kids happy and then at that point, if they've gone to these schools, wherever, they still get to see their legacy continue. And then teachers, you know, are not being forced to be in these uncomfortable situations. They get to keep their jobs where they are and they get to keep these really unique. It makes them more comfortable, I, cause I know I've talked to several teachers and of course, I'm not gonna say their names, cause they're scared of what could happen. But um, they, most of them, any teacher like I talked to, the Central Scottish or even some teachers outside. They just wanna stay at their own school, they just think renovations would be the best option, because they, they really love their schools, they don't wanna go to another school, it's scary.
And some teachers have been in the Saint Joseph School District for more than fifty years. And that is wild. Seeing that just removing one of the schools that they've been so close to and so tight knit with would be insane.
Yeah, I can't, I, it's just honestly. Concept D, I think the Scottish should really, if they find this, should really listen to our point of view on this, is that. We honestly think it's the best option, I don't think any of the other options come close to it, because it's just. Not even just looking at numbers, you're taking in emotions, you're taking in the credibility of the Scottish rate in the past. And the timely, the timely. Thank you, um, just uh for right now, I think renovating would be the best option.
And maybe in the future.
We can talk about building a new school, but.
About it, once they build their credibility up.
Yeah, we gotta build your credibility up, we gotta make sure you guys understand what's going on, everything and. Then we could talk about maybe ten years, whatever, and see maybe if people trust. You guys again with the money, I hate to sound like a little, like talking to little kids, but that's honestly what it's kind of at now, but um anyways. Scottish, if you're listening, I hope you really liked this, if, it's just anyone who's lives in the Sancho's of Scottish. Um, or anyone who was curious about listening to this, I hope you learned a bit. And maybe you change your opinion or maybe just further relieve your opinion, but I hope this starts a good conversation between the Scottish. And students and everyone, anyways, this is Ariel Hall and Tanisha Hall signing out.